Few little topics we need to cover and some things we need to maybe discuss. So got a lot to be thankful for. Midwest and northern states have had four hundred and forty-two tornadoes since middle of May. We're sitting here under this high-pressure dome, saving sound for the moment. And not getting any rain, but they're flooding and getting blown away. Criminals in Venezuela, they're busting today. There's no good in being a pickpocket. You steal a man's wallet and there's nothing in it. Bullets are unaffordable.
Just made in May.
Yeah, and stealing from somebody is out of the question. They don't have anything to steal. Criminals are going on business.
It's one way to find.
It's a bad thing. Our audit has begun this week. We're into the, uh, into the beginning portion of the audit. LED lighting is being installed as we speak. At the UTEP and Alabama Park up near in town installing the new LED streetlights and...
You know where they're at?
There's some already up.
You know where they're starting or if I want to go grab a picture?
They worked my street yesterday by coincidence. I didn't ask them to start on that end of town. The lights were so pretty last night and they just shine up and down the street so well. It's amazing.
Do you believe that?
But everybody that's got a streetlight, have a new LED streetlight soon.
Bob, you know about it.
I kept them years your comments.
I said, "Do you believe that they put yours up first?" Well, I don't need any more around mine.
You got plenty.
Yeah.
I'm real proud that I left them on item four, miscellaneous area, because we've got several things we need to, uh, that have been given to me since we formed the, um, work session agenda yesterday morning. That's come up since then we'll need to discuss. We had a gentleman with us, Mr. Glendon Calvin of Calvin Circle, that's Weston, Alabama, requesting a portion of his circle road be closed a while back. And we didn't bring that to a conclusion. Mr. Calvin called me today and asked me what we'd decided. And I told him that so far we'd had the discussion and the consideration, but we hadn't made a decision. Do y'all want to bring that up Monday night?
At the, uh, when he was here, I mean, there hasn't been a public hearing. The neighbors haven't been notified. When he was here, he had not even discussed it with the neighbors, best I remember. So the process for the public hearing and discussing with the neighbors and all that is going to have to take place before we consider anything, correct?
That's right. We'd have to have a hearing on it if we were going to close it.
And you told him that night that he didn't do that?
Yeah. But the best I remember, if you cut that off, now I may be wrong, but it's circle and these people that lived over here on this side, would have to go all the way back around here to get out, if it's best I remember. And if I lived over here, I'd say, "Yeah, it'd be all right. Just close that side over there." I mean, if it's me, wouldn't you? That may be wrong, but I'd say, "Just close that side and you'll be all right."
Wouldn't bother you?
Well, what I mean, it's not, if these people over here don't want it closed, it's not fair to them.
That's right.
It's what I, that's what I'm getting at, whoever it is.
It looks like the most practical road to leave open is the one he's wanting to close.
Yeah, that's what I thought I would remember.
Just from looking at his paperwork.
Yeah.
And, you know, I felt like that everybody'd have to come off of us a more difficult road to travel to, to come into their homes. They can all get in and out, but it looks like it's not a convenient thing. But he's saying that, you know, things like his dog getting run over and things like that's the reason he wants to close that stretch of it because people come through there too fast and what have you. He just called this afternoon and reminded me and I told him we hadn't made a decision on it yet. Do we have to pursue it? Wants somebody to request it? That's my question, Scott, or can we just decide that we're okay with it like it is?
Well, if I, I guess if we have a written petition, then we have to follow the steps. But I don't think we have a written petition from Mr. Calvin.
We just had a visit.
But if, if he has a written petition, then we'd set it for a public hearing and get comments from the public, from the neighbors and/or Mike Johnson as well. But without that, we don't have anything, you know, exactly to go off of.
Well, wouldn't we have to have, wouldn't you have to have this written permission? You're talking about him getting them to sign. Would be his neighbors signing that they would be all right with that, wouldn't?
Typically, we're not going to close a city street if it affects the neighbors. If the neighbors have a problem with it, if they join it and they have a problem with it, typically we're not going to. I'm not saying that's an absolute because there may be some other circumstances arising, but, um, but typically we want to make sure that the people that are affected by the closing are okay with it.
Yeah, they should, he should have all of his names on there that it's going to affect.
That's right.
If he don't give us that and them agreeing to it, well, there's no use for us going any further. He needs to get all the neighbors that live on that street that it would affect and that would either, you know, give us something to go on or...
I think that's the first step. I mean, just because the neighbors are okay with it doesn't mean that y'all would have to do it. But yeah, but unless we get something like that, I don't think we have to do anything on it.
Well, I'll notify him that he'll need to go forward in writing and that we can't act on just a verbal request.
Well, it'd have to be his neighbors to agree to it.
Yeah.
And sign.
And we'll see what we get from there. Okay, we'll, we'll take up some of these other matters that have come up at the end of, in the miscellaneous thing. I just wanted to kind of bring his to discussion since we just heard from him. Our first item today is about food matters and it has to do with rolling restaurants and, uh, I guess whether or not the city wants to formally adopt an ordinance to deal with this kind of a restaurant or let capitalism seek its fate, you know, and let the restaurants that come, if they make it, they make it. If they don't, they don't. What we have is two or three new restaurants that basically rolled in on wheels and they've kind of worked around them. The last restaurant that opened in town that I'm aware of is the new one right by the telephone office and the new Chevron. The people have come in and had, basically had a unit and they built a nice porch addition to the front with tables that you can sit down and maybe a little entrance to get into the restroom on the front. Pretty neat the way they've set it up, but they're serving basically from their window. You can eat it there on the porch or you can take it with you. It's that type of restaurant. But I guess I'm going to open this, open this up because we've had a merchant complaint and we've had concerns within our own ranks, so I think we need to discuss it. Scott, do you know of any kind of ordinance that we currently have on the books that address this type of food dispensary?
I don't, but that doesn't mean we don't have anything. I think it would be best addressed in our zoning ordinance if we were going to do something like this. I think we would need to address it in our zoning.
And it is addressed there and it stipulates where they're allowed. And during the last administration, I know Mayor Williams wrote a letter to the folks that issued the business license and no new business license were supposed to be issued without first going through the mayor and the council. That's to prevent people from just applying for the business license and getting it in an area that's not zoned for that type of business. So I know that request was made, so there shouldn't be any business license issued until all the criteria has been met and it's approved if it is a new business. So I don't, I know the, uh, the business license folks have changed. They're not RDS anymore, so I don't remember who they are. Questioned their bill. That's the only reason I knew that they had changed. So, I mean, you may need to make that request with them, as did, you know, the previous administration. That way, you know, all of the, uh, all of the ordinances will be followed before the license is ever issued.
Very sensible. So that's, that's the first time that I'd heard that we've put the RDS on notice of this. And that's based on our zoning and other criteria.
That's to prevent things from just popping up. Because RDS, I mean, they don't know, they don't know how we're zoned. They just, if they get an application and issue it, they don't, you know, they're not, I'm assuming they aren't familiar. I wouldn't think they would be familiar with our zoning ordinance. So I know the request was made that all new business license, you know, had to come before the mayor or the council, before application was made.
So you're saying all new businesses are supposed to be approved by y'all before they're...
That way...
Because we check the zoning.
Right.
But we don't, we don't bring it to y'all first.
Oh, wait, I have a copy of his letter that was sent. I'll have to find it and see just exactly what he specified in there.
Yeah, because we haven't been doing that. We just checked the zoning to make sure that they're in the right place. But we haven't been going the full...
Well, I mean, I guess as long as it's verified, as long as people aren't applying...
Because they won't let them apply for a license for a new business. They make them come here first.
Okay.
They won't let them do it online.
I guess as long as it's checked out. I know in the previous administration, we had a little problem and I think that's what prompted the letter to make sure that no license were issued without it all being checked. So as long, I mean, as long as it's being checked out, the zoning ordinance does, you know, it specifies where this, I think it's called a drive-up restaurant and it's strictly takeout because there's no building that they eat inside of. It specifies, you know, the location where, you know, where they have to be located. So as long as somebody's checking it out.
Well, it should be, if they're making it, setting it up and selling it, you still should have an order that said it has to be a building, permanent building. We don't want like what pulled in down there. They can load up and leave tonight and not be there tomorrow. All they got to do is crank up and go and hook.
But they've had to buy their business license for a year.
Well, I say the, I'm saying if they wanted to.
Yeah.
They got to have a permanent building.
I don't think it specifies permanent, but I mean, that...
Well, we just never had anything like that before. And it's not right for these people to come in, have to build their own buildings and everything and have something to come in, buy a license and have a truck, you might say, and sell it. If you get that started, you'll have that stuff with foreigners all over this place. You know, and they just have to look up and leave when they, when they get ready.
I was wondering about Swamp John.
Do they have a business license? Or they did at one time, I'm assuming they do.
They still do.
Also, if we get technical, we'll be dealing with caterers also that bring party foods into town and they certainly don't have an established restaurant to sell their food here, but they can sell it in big volumes and get big money for it.
Well, you, we're not talking about that where they, for parties and things. Somebody come in from out of town and fix, fix for parties and things. They're not selling it to the public. What we're running into is these people come in, sell it to the public. What you're talking about is not to the public. It's to one party or something they're having, some, you know. We've always had that.
Yeah.
We've always.
But even if we change the zone and our ordinance, am I right, Scott, that it wouldn't affect the ones that are already here? Would they not kind of be grandfathered in? We couldn't change what we've already got.
No, no. May not, but we can stop, if we don't stop it now, you're going to find out what's fixing to happen. If I was going to go in and sell hamburgers and things, well, I went in and put a half a million dollars or so into a restaurant, I'd rather put fifty thousand dollars back in my truck with a shelter built over the back of it like they done down there. And you don't know what you're getting. You don't know they're foreigners, I'm sure. You don't know where the food's coming from.
Well, they still have to go through the health department. They have to do everything that a restaurant would do before we can even consider them for a business license. They have to bring all that to us at that time.
It's still a different world and you know and I know.
Well, it's, it's good food.
I had four of them at one time and I'd had to know at that time, they trying to make a living here, that somebody could come in, set up in the back of a pickup and sell the same thing I'm having to sell are about ten or twelve people to run it with. And be inspected by the health department about it, well, every month at least, you know. I just, I, I tell you, I've been in the business before. I just don't think it's right for, to happen unless, that people can come in and set up in the back of a truck like that is. And of course, they build a porch out on it and all, but they can drive right out from under that. And you don't have any idea about them or anything else, you know. I don't guess, I haven't been down there, I'm not sure, but I have an idea of it. If they can't come in and, we can make them come in and go into a building. They can't sell off of something like that, you know, and have a permanent building to go into business in. That's the only way to stop it. But if that's what y'all want to do, I ain't going to be here long. But I just don't think it's right to go, let them come in and just, they can set up on the court square.
Zone's right, right? Their zone's right.
Yes.
What, what do you think, Scott? You're the man that...
That's, that's y'all's call. I think typically the market works all that stuff out. If, if they've got business that hurts somebody else, then they'll probably move into a bigger business. But I, I don't know.
Not those big.
I don't know that they're going to hurt anybody's business from what I've seen. Their, their food's good, but, um, I don't know.
Well, if you've been in the business, you wouldn't like it if you're sitting there with, right now, most any restaurant that we've got around here before that, come in on the back of that truck, they had two or three hundred thousand dollars tied up. Well, they got tied up when they came in, twenty thousand dollars or something.
Major thing that was concerning me is that we were following some sort of a applied, that we were in rhythm, so to speak. You know, we're putting it where it's supposed to go. It's, it's a kind of restaurant under these conditions we could accept. If we want to make a whole new plan that, that provides for a different type of structure if they come with a restaurant, then I think we're talking about something different than if we're just trying to meet our zoning and our health department issues and, and things like that. We've got to really decide if we want to make major changes in the laws that God or rules we've got or if we want to make sure that we follow all the rules if we have enough rules in place. I mean, this is, this is just, since we're a free enterprise system, these people have a good product to offer that people like. I mean, uh, I don't know how restricted the city needs to get in allowing them to come here and sell that type of cuisine. It's, it's something the people seem to like, you know, and, and I really can't, I really can't make a decision in my mind as to how rigid the city needs to be with, with that kind of an issue.
Well, I can. I don't think they would be able to sell out of the back of a truck the way that is and another fellow set right up across, right there and throw a rock at them up there and he's sitting there with about two million dollars tied up. And they're sitting down there with nothing tied up right behind them. And I don't think it's right and, and I don't think you can just let, you start letting it happen, you'll have every corner around here covered up with them.
But the, the station there is a multi-faceted, it sells alcohol, it sells food, it sells gasoline, it sells fuel. It, it does a lot of things.
Right.
And you got to have a facility like that to sell all those different things. These people specialize in one thing and, and they don't need as much space as he's built to do what they do. And they're not competing. He doesn't make oriental dishes like this, this food place makes. He's making southern cooking for his clients, so they're not competing for the same food menu. And I love the station food. It's great, but it won't fill your need. If you want sushi and rice, if you want chicken and rice, you'll have to get it where they prepare it.
Well, and there's other places you can get it, right across the street over there. They probably get it four or five right across the street on the road. It's needing to sell, it's paid for their buildings and land and stuff, what they got involved. You start letting that come in here, now I'm telling you, you're asking for trouble.
Well, that's what we're discussing, you know, and...
These restaurant people aren't going to be too happy that's got all the money tied up in with it. You know, I'll never vote for it, I'll tell you that. And I'll let it be known, not for it. Because I've been in the business, working like a devil day and night with four of them and trying to make a living in the restaurant and then they hadn't, some of them coming in then. Of course, they stopped it back then.
Well, I remember when you was in business scene and you had some good restaurants. You had, you made money with them and, you know, you served a good menu. Uh, I remember everything from the Toga Bar all the way to your sit-down restaurants, you know, and they were all good restaurants, all good food.
Well, that's the reason I'm saying that I would have to be bad against it because it, it would have made me mad if somebody could come in and set up in the back of a truck and went in business right beside of me. And there I am with all that money and stuff tied up in, in a business.
Well, those, those are self-contained kitchens and they're, they're elaborate in their way.
Well, let them be elaborate somewhere else.
I, I really don't know exactly what, what to do at this point, you know, if we...
Well, they got to have a block and brick building to go in to serve food. It's very simple. You got to have a, a building to go into that's been built, block and brick or whatever and approved. It's very simple.
We can, we can put that on the...
They can't come in on the back of a truck and serve food out and throw a little shed out over the top of it. If they want to come in and compete with the other people, I don't care. They can sell whatever you're saying, if it's that good a stuff, they ain't building a building that set it out of. I mean, that's very, it's very simple that you got to have a permanent building before you can go into the food business, you know, in Holland, Alabama. That's all, to me, that's all you need, isn't it, Scott?
We could, I mean, we could propose something that, that simple if you want. It's going to cover a lot of ground though. That's the, do we want to stop the Swamp Johns from coming in and selling as well?
Yeah, if they're not, they don't give them a permanent building or if they're bringing it in not to sell off the streets, you know.
But Swamp Johns is the fundraiser that the churches and the school and...
Well, that's all right.
And everybody, well, that's why we can't say it's permanent. You have to have a permanent structure because they come in in their truck. So that's what we've got to think about. I mean, they come in with their truck and they cook the food on-site in their truck. So if you want to change it for it to say it has to be a permanent structure, then we've just knocked out fundraising for everybody.
Okay, they can, if they're going to want to keep doing that, they can get them a permanent structure here in town somewhere to fix it in and then they can carry them, deliver it. Because they're not, they're not fixing it to eat on the site. Swamp John, they're not. Swamp Johns, they don't fix it. These people are fixing it to eat on the site. Swamp Johns brings it here and unload, you carry it home with you. You don't, it's not eating on the site, on the site. That, that, I'm, I'm, that's what you...
They could be.
No, y'all can vote on it any way you want to, but I'm against it and ain't nothing to change because I've been in the food business. I know how hard it is to make a living out of it. And it, and everybody's like competition. It was a fire. If it's fire, it's fine.
That's right.
Well, a lot of the restaurants that are in business don't own their buildings, Gene.
But they sure paying a heck of a lot of rent then.
Well, I know, but, but they, they have to lease or rent something to go into. It's just like when Little Caesar's came. They had to find a place that they could lease.
Yeah.
They didn't buy their building. They, but they found a place to go into.
Right, that's fine. They're in a permanent building. That's permanent. They can't pick that up, they can't tie a truck to it and haul it off tonight, David.
But, but they've just installed equipment in a leased building and...
Well, if that's what you're for, you go ahead and they pass it for you, that's all right. And you'll see what you're going to get from these little people in Holland that's in the business.
I think you're being too rigid with it and that you're wanting to say everybody's got to build a building and that can't happen. I mean, it...
Well, it can't happen. It's always happened up to Lee moved in down there.
People can't afford it.
They don't need to be in the business saying they're pushing. I'm just saying I'm not for it. You got everybody else here can fight. That's fine if that's what they want to do. But I, I'm not. I've been in the business and that's not fair competition whatsoever for a business. And you got the health department and everything there that that's what they're for too, to stop the things like this. But everybody else here may be for it. I'm, I'm not against them for business. They're not, that they're not, that they're for it, that's fine. But Gene's not, never going to vote for it because I've been there and had to put up a bill over there.
Well, the main thing if we're going to put something on the agenda that, that changes rules is knowing what we want and, uh, making everybody come here and build a building is not what I'm going to vote for.
Well, I didn't say everybody had to build a building, but he didn't build a building to the ones down there. He pulled in here on a truck, keep cooking it on the truck. All he done is put a shed out there from set on heat and getting wet. That's not, that's... I don't know who's...
I'm, I'm going to want food places here that won't own their building. And, you know, there's a lot of places that lease or run a building.
Well, that's all right, but he's not renting, he pulled in here on the truck, is what I'm saying. That's what I'm talking about. I, there's half of them here don't own the, I didn't own some of the buildings I was in, but I worked out of them.
I think they're renting the properties, aren't they?
I'm sure they are.
Yeah, yeah, they're renting, yeah, just pulling it in there on the truck and setting it up. Yeah, yeah, they're renting, yeah, just pulling it in there on the truck and setting it up and setting. They rented a property down there that. We couldn't get much. Didn't work with us too well. Of course, I don't think they got any business either, from my understanding, but. And kinda like Wade, I believe that'll take care of itself down there. Well, but you know. You gotta kinda stop it somewhere, though, if you don't, you. It look like it's only Wade, I mean.
It's like.
I don't know, but. In that uh. Parking lot down there, that uh. Little old shopping center. That I built down there, shopping center, and somebody's got one of those things sitting out there under a shed in that parking lot. I don't know what you're selling out of it. But it's something just like what they've got out there.
It's uh Japanese type food, I believe. Uh, that would be. More of your. Japanese cuisine, I, I don't know exactly what the dishes are called. I hardly know how to order at a place like that because, you know, I'm a, I'm a meat and taters man. But uh. But. I've been there once and the food that I got, uh, had chicken and rice in it. And I, I enjoyed it, it was very tasty. But I, I don't go often, I, I might go again in a year or so, but, but it was good.
I like chicken and rice at many of the restaurants here down. Not most, any of them fix your chicken and rice.
They know how to do it with that soy sauce and stuff like that, that juices it up a little bit. It's pretty good stuff.
I went with Johnny Mac one day for lunch, out to the uh Mexican restaurant out toward Weston. And we sat down and I looked at Johnny Mac, I said, Johnny Mac, I don't know how to order. He said, I'll, I'll do the order, I said, okay. So waitress came up very nice, she says, give us two hamburgers. And a glass of tea each. And she says, that it, she says, that's it. I said, why are you crazy, maybe I could order that.
Oh boy, from this city, they're gonna order hamburgers.
It's always a hamburger.
Scott, now tell us, you're the lawyer.
You better tell.
Give us your opinion about it, but.
Uh, legally, I'll do whatever y'all, y'all wanna do, I.
Well, we had to have it legal.
It'll have to come through the zoning, uh, is how we'd have to do it, through the planning commission and bring it up through there. And it would have to be carefully drafted to cover a lot of different circumstances, but. Just whatever y'all would like to do, we can put something together, I think ultimately it, it works itself out. It's one of those, if I've got a restaurant, and like you said, having a restaurant entails a tremendous amount of financial commitment. The size of that restaurant also dictates. How much you're going to actually make, the bigger the restaurant, the more money you can make. By virtue of, of. I don't think that one behind the AT&T store would be classified as a food truck because it, it's not mobile, like immediately mobile. But something like that's limited on what they can bring in. Like, they're not gonna challenge a steakhouse as far as business, just because they can't serve that many people. Um. And so that, that factors in a little bit. If, if a restaurant like that is wanting to make more money, then they're gonna have to do that, but they may be, they may be perfectly fine with minimal expense and. The limited amount of, you know, there's gonna be a ceiling on what they can bring in. Um, to where a restaurant that can seat two hundred people. It's obviously gonna have more revenue.
Yeah, that's a different thing, yeah.
Um, but, but it's a, it's a juggling act, I, I just think it, it certainly works itself out, um. I wish uh, all, all the restaurants in town had all the business they could handle. Cause then it means we're growing and we got people here eating out and spending money and cities making money. Off of it as well.
I think that we're very fortunate to have a right, a variety of restaurants for people to eat, and I think people come here to eat. Uh, they drive from distances to eat at our restaurants, and I'm real proud of that, and. Uh. I, I don't think we're overbooked in restaurants. I think we've got about the right amount to attract some people every week and, and feed the folks that live around here and, and. I'm proud of every one of them and. You know, it's just, some of them specialize in barbecue. Some of them specialize in whatever they do, but they're, they usually. Uh, find their niche and, and they've got their group of customers and. Uh, I don't think we're overbooked.
Well, we got two more coming in out on the interstate, that's for sure.
That's right. And, and they're going.
And probably another one out on the other. Exit, so they go out there and there'd be another two come in out there.
I hope that they attract people that are driving that interstate and are hungry and wanna eat and pay money and pay taxes and. We do better, so I think it's all gonna be really good. We'll explore that some, Scott, and I'll, I'll get with you and, and we'll, uh. Get our zoning books out and see where we can go with it, we'll bring back something to talk to the council. Suborseriously about, it's just something that I didn't wanna move, if we don't need to move, if we do need to move, then we'll move in the direction that we wanna go. And uh. I was trying to get suggestions from y'all today as to what direction to head, I don't wanna go off the cliff and. Uh. Nobody cares when I hit the bottom, you know? Uh. Cause I, I'm, I'm never wanting to just go fly headlong into something and not know exactly what I'm doing. This is a subject that's come up and.
Well, one thing you can do is check with some more towns about what they're doing about it. Cause most of your towns have stopped them. And they'll know what. What they did, if you wanna stop them. If you wanna keep them rolling in here.
I, I, I've.
I've been rolling out.
I've done some in fire and some cities haven't had any of those come and some say they'll just let them come on in and.
We had nearly a recession, see.
So.
Would that affect the food trucks like at the festivals and stuff?
We'd have to limit it to temporary, I mean, there's ways you can cut that out, but that's, I mean, you don't wanna cut those.
No.
Those out, but.
The uh. Item two. And we'll, we'll work on this food matters some more and, and we'll come back to this discussion, I promise you. With, with more ideas. Uh, or maybe something we could act on or build on. Uh, paving this summer, uh, is something we wanna do some of, and we've been given a grant for two hundred thousand. If we put fifty thousand of our money. In the deal. But papers I've got to sign had a place for a, a resolution that will put up our fifty thousand. And if the paving that we wanna do exceeds two fifty, then the city would, would pay for the balance. But I've instructed Mike not to bid any jobs that exceed the amount. To shut off a street if it took it, but we've got about six streets laid out for this money to take care of it and. Uh, it's six that are highly trafficked and. Uh, at, at Monday night's meeting, we're gonna need to sign a, a pass a resolution. To put fifty thousand dollars in with the two hundred thousand that were being given, uh, from the state bridge and highway fund.
Monday night, will you run back over the ones that are actually going to get the asphalt pavement and the twelve that are going to get the tar and slime?
Yes, it, it's set out in that, it's set out in that agreement with the state.
And.
And we'll let everybody know exactly which streets are involved.
Now, we, now we could, if we wanted to, spend more than fifty thousand, couldn't we?
Yes, yes.
You know, they gonna, they gonna spend only two hundred thousand, but we can spend two hundred too if we wanted to.
Yes. Yes, that's right, too. Uh. We've uh. Our intention is to fix a number of streets as we have each summer with tar and gravel. In addition, we're getting this other money this year to do some asphalt paving and. Uh. The paperwork's here for us, that's keep, we can't execute without an ordinance from the council to, to stand good for our fifty thousand. Uh, that goes with the two hundred that the state's gonna give us.
We're gonna have to get on that, we're gonna do it this summer.
Uh, I've asked Mike to be, put out feelers for bidders and tell them which streets they'll be bidding on. So we can go ahead and be a little ahead of the game when he brings in the people to the bidding table that wanna bid on this job. Uh, and. Uh, he's gonna see how many bidders he can come up with, he's putting some feelers out for us now.
Do we have to advertise that, Scott?
The bids, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, A, ADO is gonna have very specific requirements about what we have to do, and I mean, they basically have a book that we have to follow it step by step and. Mike and our engineers will go through that.
He's just trying to get somebody to be willing to bid, that's what we've had problems with is, is find somebody that was. Able to do it in the summertime and not already over obligated their company for, he's trying to see if people will bid on this job. Um. Another item that'll come up Monday night, Ronnie Victory has asked me to put on the Monday night agenda. If he'll be needing to post one uh job for either certified or non-certified officers. Uh, and he's wanting applications. For this and. That'll be on Monday night's agenda to post a job for the police department.
That's got a list of the streets on it that are gonna be.
Mike Johnson. Mike Johnson needs to uh. Build a wash pad that will empty into the sewer, draining the sewer and. Uh, I don't know if that job has to be advertised in the paper or not, but it'll be. Uh, just a wash pad to clean up their vehicles and equipment. Currently, they keep washing, let the water run on the ground, it's gonna have to run into the sewer. And he's got two guys that do cement work to look at this. One was a little over six thousand dollars and the other one was forty-two hundred, they're both regular cement men that do good work and. Uh, he hasn't awarded the job, but that's the range of money we're talking about.
So what do, will they wash the, like?
What will he wash? Their trucks, their tractors.
I know, but, but oil can't go into the sewer, I mean, there's soap.
Soap is what he's just having the trouble getting rid of. The soap that he cleans the vehicles with can't just run out on the ground, they won't let him wash.
But Rodney says it's okay to go in the sewer or, or Adam or Mr. Hilton?
Well, the, the people who checked down there told him that that's the only way he could have a wash bay that's directed into the sewer. And I think that's where he's coming from.
Yeah, that's what he said, oh.
Was it Aiden? Was that Aiden?
Whoever was about to find us for washing down there.
It was Aiden. So are we gonna have something on the agenda Monday night? For Mike about, um. About something?
He'd like to get this done so he gets off of the pit list for the inspectors when they come. He can't really do, he's having to go to the fire department now to wash vehicles.
We need to vote on it Monday night, I'd say.
We'd like.
Yeah.
Get him approved for Monday night.
Yeah, I'd say. Was the fire department, is it going to serve?
See how this goes.
Somebody goes down the road. I'm walking out there. They washed them.
If you don't have soap in it, they can wash the bays down with just a fire hose, you know, but.
I don't know what that was.
Put soap in it, it has to empty your sewer system.
It's white.
Okay. This brings us down to. Agreement Amendment seven seventy-two. Scott, will you talk to us about what we'll be needing to do Monday night and, and what this agreement consists of, please?
Yes, sir, it's very similar to what we did at our last meeting, uh, this is the final step in the uh economic development agreement with Love's. Travel stops, uh, we'll need to approve this agreement and pass an ordinance approving that. Uh. The issues are the same, it's going to be. The rebate of the diesel tax up to two million dollars, um, it's going to be, um, getting the grants for the turn lane. And. We've got those two, um. Commitments so far from a decka on, on those two grants through ARC and uh CDVG. And uh the land swap agreement, uh, which will also be part of this Monday night, wherein we're swapping the approximate three acres that the city owns. It's on the north side of. Key West End, uh, for three acres that are on the north side of that three, three acres. Um, what'll happen is, once we approve this agreement, we will have a validation lawsuit, which will uh be filed in the circuit court of Marion County. To approve uh the agreement and make sure it complies with Amendment seven seventy-two of the Constitution of Alabama. Amendment seven seventy-two is the constitutional amendment that was passed a few years back, which grants every municipality. In the city and, I mean, in the state and every county in the state, the ability to do certain things for commercial and industrial manufacturing. Uh, basically any, any type of economic development purposes. We have the Amendment eighty-four, which was what we went under last, last week. Uh, but Amendment seven seventy-two is a little broader and has a few more requirements uh for the city to comply with, we've run notice of it in the newspaper. And so we're just ready to vote on it uh Monday night, and then Love's will close out on all their property purchases and transfers. Uh, that week.
Any questions with Scott concerning that uh seven seventy-two amendment? Okay, that'll be on the agenda for Monday night also.
Is that we were awarded this? Has it been officially awarded?
We got the uh big tile. We got the big tiles reinstalled in Seventh Street, we got it uh passable now where it can be used again. It was quite a job, but our guys, when they sit in to do something, our our guys do good work and they've got it installed and uh we're just real proud of our street guys for the job they did. Seventy-two inch tile, forty feet long, both of them collapsed and uh we were without Seventh Street for several days. We're passable again, and that's good. That's one of the streets that we're gonna asphalt, so we'll probably have a Band-Aid on that covered area till we get ready to put the asphalt down. It'll be kept smooth, but we we won't have it finished till we asphalt it. Our bridge, Grandview, is still a sore thumb, it's uh I've I've talked to Paul, our engineer, numerous times, I've put calls through to the contractor, contractor secretary, I have yet to get a call back from them. But Paul says that there were down to one item on the punch list, and that's the uh hairline fractures that showed up in the cement, that they've gotta have smoothing cement rubbed in them and it has nothing to do with the strength of the bridge. It's just something that showed up when they took the forms off and until that's rubbed with wet cement and covered up the little fractures uh they won't sign off on the bridge.
Well, that's that's been a couple of weeks ago and that's uh, I've got some neighbors that's upset about that. And I've even heard that there's a man uh that lived over there that was, had a board down there with nails in. And that doesn't sound good to me, have we not paid them before?
Has nothing to do with the money.
Why did we pay them, do we got our bridge in, you thought I can't figure it?
We had nothing to do with the pay part of it, we had to put our money up with the state's money and the states did all the paying. I don't know if the contract's fully paid or not, I'd I'd figure they've held back something.
Yeah, they hold back ten percent or something to its complete.
Barrett Webb from Thet's over this job and every time I've talked to him, you know, it sounds like we're gonna get it next week tomorrow, but.
They're not working on it.
For some reason. At first, some of the grass didn't come up and then it had to do with this cement thing. I've talked to our bridge inspector and he says it's a great bridge, that we should be using it. He's already sent his reports in and we paid him for inspecting it, but the state won't sign off on the job. I'm I'm really distressed about it, I I've never had anything quite like this one.
And you've talked to somebody at the state?
I've talked to everybody that's involved, more than once.
They pushing it back?
I don't understand it. I don't, I just don't, I think somebody is mad at somebody, but I can't figure out who it is. They're not mad at the city, it's got to be between the state and the contractor, in my opinion. Something is minor, it's rubbing a little wet cement on a hairline fracture, that's no- that's nothing.
If anybody can do that, yeah.
You and Bobby Joe could go do that in season.
Don't care about Joe.
Have it done for supper.
I don't much care you.
No.
Me either, I don't want that there.
Well, we want them to supervise.
Had supervision the sideline, wouldn't you bother?
You heard any rumors as to why we can't use our bridge, Scott? You know everything's going on, it's a secret. My man Scott is talking on the talks of the whole county, I can't even tell us why we don't have our bridge.
If you find out, you go tell my neighbor.
I I think I just start the rumor that I heard, just don't want it open.
Too much trash.
No, that that bridge, phew, it's about, what, seven years into this project?
We're way into it, we were we were in, within minutes of losing our million dollar grant. We came to the wire on that. Then we got the lid on the thing, it was way higher than the million dollars, we put up good money to make it happen, now we can't get our bridge.
When was it supposed to be done initially? When was it expected to be done?
I don't even remember.
It was supposed to be done two months ago. The first bridge that was designed to go up there was a twenty-eight foot bridge. While the road bed wasn't wide enough to accommodate that, so they cut it to twenty-four. The state had redesigned specs so the twenty-four foot bridge can be drawn to their specs, they didn't even have the specs for a twenty-four foot bridge anymore. They quit building them long ago, till they ran into this one. Took over four years to get a a design approved.
They will have it in about four more with that. Her brick, you'll ever get to use it?
I don't know, it's gonna have to her.
It's like my dad in the late seventies was showing me where the new highway corridor X was going behind the house and where the big bridge is gonna be. I was all upset until he told me it would be finished about nineteen ninety. Well, in two thousand and five, they finally finished. Like, it took him twenty-five years.
And by the time they finish that, Mississippi already repaid about five thousand.
Well, if y'all think things are bad in Hamilton, just think about them criminals in Venezuela that's got all that business. So they can't pick pockets no more, the bullets are unaffordable and and robbing someone's out of the question, they don't have any money. So things are nice and good in Hamilton, we're proud of it, thank y'all for coming today, I appreciate everybody being.